We'll go ahead and start the finance subcommittee meeting. And I'm gonna turn it over to Melanie first to do the report. And then we'll go from there. And I will be transitioning from my phone to the computer.
Great, thank you, Counselor Whitfield. I'm just gonna go ahead and share the screen for the report. Alright, so back to the application count. So here is a list of all of the applications that we have. And so it's broken down by categories here. And you'll see, again, it's the same structure as before, and I'll go over that. But we added what you requested to have the seniors category underneath, so I'll just go over all of these now. So a total of seventeen thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven applications have been received. Of those, one thousand four hundred and nine have been awarded. So obviously, the larger sum of both buckets is under the household and senior category. Seventeen thousand one fourteen applications received in that category and thirteen oh one awarded thus far. And as you had requested, we broke down of the total here that we just went over, which is just for seniors. So of the seventeen one fourteen, five seventy-five of those applications are from the old senior application version. So we have so far awarded two hundred and fifty of those. And we're still, we're going through all of the applications. We sent out mailers to all of the ones that haven't been awarded with detailed information as to what they're missing, along with a return stamped envelope for them to bring back to us. So we're still getting a lot of those in slowly every week. So those are certainly reviewed and awarded, so long as it's got all the information that we have requested. So that's the updated info on the applications count data. Do you have any questions? Do you want me to keep going?
Any questions on this information so far, I think? Is it only me and Counselor Hurst today?
Yes, that's for counselors, yes.
Okay, Council Letterman is joining us. He just had, had to be late. Okay, keep going.
Great. Alright, so then the next section here is the budget, which we've also updated a little bit. And so the data for the most part is all the same, except for the last part here is where we include what the balance available was for the last meeting we had, and then the variance between the two. And so, again, it goes into what has been awarded so far under all of these categories or committed the sum of all those, what has been spent, encumbered, and if there's any requisitions, what are those? And then the balance available just takes what has been awarded or committed and reduces from that amount what's been spent or encumbered or committed for any other purpose. And so that's what the balance is here, forty-one point three, and then you'll see it's compared to last week's. And then here is the, the variances on the far right side as well. And so over at the bottom here, you will also see that the total ARPA award is listed so that you can see the variance between the two, and the remaining ARPA award is forty-six point seven million. Alright, I'll keep on going unless you have any questions. So then the next page here, we have a list of all of the ARPA awards that have been made and the status in which they are. So it's been, it's exactly the same as prior weeks or two weeks ago, should I say. The only thing that's changed is that Hope CDC was added to the list, which was not included last time. So that's in there, it's, ooh, went too far, sorry. And then just any type of change, whether a check was issued or the status of the checks, or sorry, of the contract in general has been updated as well. And then the next report here is the same as above. However, it goes into more granular data with regards to the demographics. So whether they're located in a QCT, minority-owned, woman-owned, veteran-owned, if it's a nonprofit, whether they serve a minority population, and also the neighborhood in which they're located is at the far right over here. And this is all summarized neatly in these tables below. So again, everything is pretty consistent with the, with the exception of the addition of Hope CDC, which is a nonprofit that's been added on here. And then the last report, which was also asked of last two weeks ago, is of the applications that were denied, that we sent out letters to, a little bit of more detailed information regarding those, and so this is that. So we sent out thirty-four letters, denial letters, back in September, early to mid-September. We have not sent any more since then, and so the breakdown of those are such. The small businesses are twenty-seven, new businesses, three, nonprofits, two, Echo Dev and Job Creation, two. So these are just a different type of categories of the applications that we received. And then a little bit more on the demographics of those thirty are located in a QCT, twenty-five are minority-owned. And here's a little of the breakdown of that, fourteen women-owned and two veteran-owned. And that's all that we have.
Thank you, Melanie. So when I looked at those numbers, so there were twenty-five minorities that were denied. So does that mean nine were white-owned, um, applications?
Yes, and then there was two that were nonprofits, so they don't count under the business category.
Under the business category, okay. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to make sure that, because when we think about minority, it's more than just like Asian. Black and Latino, so I just wanted to make sure that the nine that were, were denied, also they were white-owned businesses. Well, the two nonprofits, so seven?
Right. And so just, uh, just for clarification, too, these were denied based on the evaluations. I emailed you guys two weeks ago, the evaluations, when they get a composite score that is not highly advantageous. Those then don't get forwarded for awards. So those were the ones in which were sent the denial letters that are included in this data.
Okay. I'm just gonna transition to my laptop real quick. Alright, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Alright, any questions on the denied ARPA applications? I know this was a question that you had, Counselor Hurst.
I did. I mean, it looks pretty straightforward to me. Yeah, looks pretty straightforward to me. I guess the only other breakdown, yeah, I guess that doesn't matter as much. Sorry, I'm just thinking out loud. Yeah, it looks good to me. I think it's something that I'll, I'll shoot an email later on, but appreciate it.
I have a quick, a quick question, Madam Chair. If there's nobody else in line, sorry.
I don't think so.
I, I guess my question is, on, on those denial letters, you said they were sent the end of August, so are, were all of the denial letters that were sent, sent just as a result of the, the initial review ruling them to be not in order? So none of those made it, none of those made it to the advisory level or to the mayor? They just were gone?
Yes, that is correct. All of those were as a result of the initial evaluation not passing in order to go through advisory or the mayor.
And there's thirty-four of them total?
Thirty-four were the ones that have been sent a letter, correct?
Now, do those include the couple that, or the few that came from outside the city as well?
No, this is not include the, because I figured that would muddy the, the.
Yeah, I would just throw the data off, that's all.
Yeah, no, we also sent a bundle to people who just don't reside in Springfield or don't have a business in Springfield, so that is not included in this data. We can certainly do that, too. But I just didn't want to mess the data up for legit ones versus ones that weren't qualified in the first place.
For the denied applications, are those, are those applications available? Like, can we view them?
That's a great question. Let me talk to Lauren and Prekerman to see when they become, or how they become public record. Because I know for the ones that get awarded upon execution of a contract is when they become agreed upon scope, service, and prize, they become public.
Are they available to the advisory committee members?
Oh, wow, yeah, I have, I would have no issue as advisory committee member taking a peek at them.
So I think it might make sense to, I mean, I'm gonna go look at them, and if they're in the file, I'm gonna go look at them. But I guess the question I have is, it, it might make sense for the advisory committee to, as one of the next meetings, just also take a look at them. I think, I think that that might make sense, so that we're getting an idea of what is not being forwarded. And if we see trends that we're concerned with, I think then, you know, we should be able to say, hey, you know, we, we need to look at what that, what, you know, as a blind review. So I guess if there's, there's, you know, applications that appear to be speaking to needs that we think should be spoken to, we need to communicate, you know, down the line to the folks doing the review that, hey, you know, maybe we're missing an area here in whatever rubric is being used to evaluate these. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we could definitely work on that.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. I mean, if I recall, these are the ones that had no link, very minimal or no link to COVID, or they had other areas where they were, where they were weak in their application, but we can.
Yeah, some of them may be no-brains, right? Some of them, it may be just a hundred percent clear that it does not make sense. But, you know, I, I mean, I'd like to be able to at least take a look at it and get an idea. So if I can see them, I'll go look at them, but I think I would encourage the other advisory committee members to do the same, so we can make sure that we're all on the same page.
We can add that, just like we met today, we can add it as the kind of thing, just to make sure everyone's briefed on.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Counsel Letterman?
Uh, no, thank you, Madam Chair.
Alright, thank you. Can you scroll back up to the first page?
Yep, let me, oh. Over here?
Yes, and more of these questions are for the Economic Development Team. So the exterior and healthy homes have all these applications in and none have been awarded. Can we talk about the status of those?
Sure, so I think it would probably be helpful if I also shared my screen, just so you can kind of see. So I think the last time we met with you, we sort of overviewed how it's a little bit more of a complicated process than just saying your application's in, okay, it's eligible. We have to take inspections and contracts and have them get a lawyer, because we're recording a loan on their home. So, um, that being said, let me share my screen, so you can see at least a little bit more. Okay, so this is the, a quick overview of the exterior repair program. This is the number of properties that are in the inspection phase. So what that means is the income certification has been completed, and they're in various stages of inspection. For exterior repair, we actually have two projects this week that are, the inspections completed, the bids have come in, we've awarded basically to a low bidder, and they're going, they're going out to the attorneys to schedule that closing. It's just not reflected yet, because the contract hasn't actually been signed. So once the contracts are signed, then we'll start updating the numbers under contracted. This is overview for the Healthy Homes Program. Um, and again, so I should say, our anticipation and our experience so far is that the exterior repair program is moving a little quicker than the Healthy Homes Program, and that's really because of the nature of the program. The Healthy Homes Program is, is more complicated. We're looking at whole home rehab, and we're also doing lead inspections plus interior and exterior inspections. And I will say, the Healthy Homes Program also covers the historic districts in the city. And so for those homes, we actually go for historic approval before the contract gets awarded, so we can be sure what those specifications are. So there are several properties that are going through that historic review process now.
Okay.
And then in the denied and dropped out column, that really just reflects folks who either are not, you've completed the income certification, and they are not income-qualified, or they have contacted us and said they don't want to move forward in the program.
Okay, um, so how, how are they notified through each phase? So once the application is finished with review and they're in the inspection phase, are they notified?
Yes, so we schedule the inspection with them. So yes, they're notified. So typically, as we're doing the income certification, we have never done an income certification where we don't have to go back to them and ask a question or get some sort of clarification. So we are, we have sent out notices, email notices to everyone, letting them know that we've received their application and it's under review, and we'll contact them further. As we get into the income certification process, they typically are hearing from us. And then when they get moved to the inspection phase, we're contacting them, because we're actually scheduling the inspection with them. And then as we go to, into the bid process, they're also contacted, because we do a walkthrough at the property for all the contractors to make sure that we're getting accurate bids for the work that is going out there. So the homeowners are definitely pretty well aware of where they are once we get into that income certification process.
And the ones that were denied, can you give us like a couple reasons why? Is it income-based or?
Yeah, so there's only two reasons. It's income-based, either they, they, their income doesn't qualify, it's too high, or they have contacted us and specifically requested to not go forward in the program.
Okay, I have a question about the Build Back Springfield program, but I'm gonna let Counselor Hurst have the floor and ask his questions.
Sure.
Thank you. Just a quick question. So these are loans, correct?
They're forgivable loans.
Oh, they're forgivable loans. After how long?
Uh, five years. So they get forgiven at twenty percent per year that the home remains under occupied.
So what happens to the money if they end up not, if it's, if it's not forgiven and they have to pay it back? What ultimately happens? Does that money go back to the government?
The, in the instance where, yes, in the instance where they sell the home or rent the home during the contract period, then yes, it gets repaid, the outstanding amount, whatever it is, depending on where we are in the contract and the forgivable period, it comes back to the city. Typically, when we see as programming.
It comes back as program income, and then those funds are put back into the program, and we have to track that for the federal government, but it would go right back into the program.
And there's no deadline in terms of when those fu, particular funds have to be spent? So if we get to, what is it, twenty twenty-four, and we started to receive twenty twenty-six?
Four is when everything has to be under contract, twenty twenty-six is when everything has to be expended.
So it's program income after twenty twenty. Program income after twenty twenty-six, they have not spoken to, so we, we will have to, retain those funds, or they'll be required to send back to the federal government.
What we can say, CDBG, typically, so, because we have CDBG, and we also have CDBGDR and CDBGCB, to, at the end of those programs, when program income comes back after they've ended, they allow us to roll it into our regular CDBG allocation.
So they have allowed us to keep it, it's just they, and they allow you to put it back into an entitlement you get every year. So I'm assuming that will be the same case here.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, any other questions on these two programs? Alright, do you have any information on the Build? What is it? I always forget the name, Build Better Springfield.
Unfortunately, I don't think we do.
No.
No, Tim and Brian are on vacation.
Oh, Tim and Brian, okay, because I just got questions about, you know, well, Donald Mitchell's application yesterday. And I was just wondering if you guys know any information on that one, so that's a no.
That's a no, sorry.
Okay, alright, um. Counselor Hurst, your hand is still up. Counselor Allen, thanks for joining as part of the finance team. Appreciate it.
Couple questions unrelated to the, to the housing. Question number one is, how often does the team meet to review these applications? How often have you met over the course of the last, I don't know, two weeks? Do you meet every week or every two weeks or?
Is that housing applications? Is that what you're asking?
Not housing, not unrelated to housing.
Oh, okay, sorry.
No, it's okay. So generally, just generally, we meet every two weeks. We haven't met in a little while, because we had to get ourselves organized. And today, we had a two-hour marathon session going through one about, what do you say, Mel? Seventy to seventy-five that we went through today, or we took action on today.
Oh, no, it was, the total we had to go through was about forty, so.
Forty, so we went through like application by application, but ones that made it through the highly advantageous stage to the advisory committee. And our goal is to basically meet at least every, every other week, if not more frequently, now that we're breaking the logjam that we have.
Got it. And then the second question is, what did you all do differently this time around to get so many applications done in the course of the last two weeks, right? Because you must have done over a thousand.
So, well, let me comment kind of holistically, kind of what our approach is now, and I probably should have started out with this one. So, um, the Mel's team has been kind of primarily focusing just on the household assistance, where we got seventeen thousand applications, and that has been completely labor-intensive, trying to make sure that we don't duplicate payments or try to route out any potential fraud issues that we've encountered. And we've kind of held off on the evaluation committee or advisory committee meeting on the ones that have made it through. Echo Dev and Community Development have since stepped up and said they will take over the nonprofit, small business, new business applications to help, you know, because we're not being able to hire additional staff as easy as we hope, that they're taking it over to start pick up kind of, and make, start making additional progress. So, right now, I'd say the forty that we did today and the seventy-five that are out there are clean up from stuff we've been kind of doing over the course of like the last couple of months or so. And now we have a process to kind of pick up the pace again and get back on track.
So can we just go back to the screen with the numbers in terms of households slash seniors?
Yep, just one second. This one?
Yes, I'm sorry, let me see if I can get it on my screen. Trying to make it a little bigger here. Sorry. So I can't see those numbers, unfortunately. But what are the numbers for households in terms of the number of, there we go, much better. So you have seventeen? I'm sorry, I'm a little confused.
Seventeen thousand one hundred and fourteen applications received for household and senior assistance.
Okay, so I'm right or wrong the first time. How many did you get through?
We've got, we've awarded and given a check to thirteen hundred and one.
But we've received a lot more than that, though. Those are the ones.
Those are the ones that have through scrutiny and actually made sense to award checks. And just so, just so the committee is aware, you know, I can't, I won't share it on my screen, but I have a picture of a New York State license with a Springfield, Mass, summoner ad, address. And this is the type of stuff people are submitting that we need to go double check.
They get creative.
They get very creative on how, trying to get us, to scam us out of fourteen hundred bucks.
I, I got it.
But so we have, it's just a bit of a challenge to, to do that part of it.
I'm sorry, I thought you had gotten through a lot more, and I must have been looking at different numbers.
There's probably thousands that are not eligible, that we're trying to figure out what to do with or how to deal with them. And that's kind of really, like, you know, I would say, I would say there's at least a few thousand of those anyway, where their, where their utility bills don't match up, their addresses don't match up to their license, or, or whatever it may be. And, you know, it's, so we're just trying, those want to be put aside for now, just to get the checks going to those that are fully ready to go.
Right.
Got it. So did we do any additional new businesses and nonprofits from the last time? I can't quite tell from the numbers, or small businesses, I'm sorry.
Not since two weeks ago, but the advisory committee took up about forty applications today.
Okay, um, okay, alright, based off of this new system that you are?
Correct. Cleanup of the old system and now getting ready for the new system.
Okay, sounds good. So I am, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So of the forty applications, did you all determine which ones are going to move to the mayor for approval?
Yes, there's still a few more left, but yes, we made some, determined some recommendations.
Some recommendations. How many can you say?
Oh, I think they decided on a most, about eighty percent of them, I made a decision on them. But there's like a handful that we just ran out, we had two-hour meeting, we ran out of time, so.
No, sorry, okay.
So we're rescheduling to next week.
Next week, and to finish those twenty percent that you didn't get through?
Yep, to finish the whole list.
And so that, are you going to move the eight percent forward to the mayor? Or are you gonna wait till next week until you complete the review of all of them?
We have to wait till all of them are done, so you can give him a full list of everything, just easier that way, that we can see everything.
Okay, I just wanted to hear from Counsel Letterman, how that process went for you?
Yeah, yeah, I intended to, to speak to that prior to the end of the meeting. So the advisory committee did today for about two hours. I want to be clear that the advisory committee is convened by the finance office. So I do not have a say in when it meets, however, I have been encouraging the advisory committee to meet on a weekly basis since the meetings have been canceled in the past, so I want to be clear about that. I also want to be clear, the advisory committee is, it does not seem to have a role in the household distribution. That's, that happens, seems to be happening completely outside of the advisory committee, just based on the process of the finance office has established to release those, those checks based on the applications and the qualification criteria and the QCT and the income outside of the QCT. So it's only hearing the nonprofit, new business, and small business. This was only my second advisory committee meeting, because I'd only met once since I became president prior to this, and all of those applications at that time were forwarded. But I can say, based on how the discussion went, the things that were being prioritized was trying to, A, understand the impact and link to COVID, looking at what the request was for, and also trying to be consistent with the awards that were made previously. I would say most of the applications that came up, as TJ indicated, I did receive a favorable recommendation to go forward. Ultimately, it's the mayor's call to make, similar to the marijuana process, Counsel Whitfield. The mayor has to make the decision on what he'll award. But what I tried to do was look at it from the perspective of what I've been hearing at the city council, in terms of trying to, A, get this money out, B, make sure it goes out equitably, and C, be consistent with past awards. So one of the big things I was pushing was, I want to make sure we're not looking at a situation where, okay, somebody got a certain amount of money early in the process, and now, you know, somebody else is getting an inconsistent award. You know, I think I've heard that at this committee a lot, wanting to make sure we're fair in that regard. The other piece that I brought forward to the committee and encouraged committee members to look at is the report that came forward at this meeting last week or the week prior relative to the demographic breakdown of awards that have actually been made. And I've asked in the meeting this morning, Melanie, to prepare a report that speaks to that same demographic breakdown each and every time that the cycle goes through. So my point to the advisory committee is, we need to be tracking that very closely. We also need to be considering that as we're talking about the awards going forward. So I think some of the committee members had seen it already, others did indicate they would look at it. And that is, that is pretty much, I would say, a synopsis of how things went this morning.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Report out. Thank you. I appreciate that. Reported out. Um, one, one concern I have with um, comparing it to other awardees, like for example, when um, I'm sorry to keep using Big Y, but that's the one that everybody's talking about. Gets a million dollars, right? Who's comparable, like, in, in that space?
So that, the way, I don't, I don't want to speak for the mayor for making the ultimate decision, but the way the decision was made for the Big Y one and the way the decision was even made for the Rafer's uh, Worthington Street was more based upon what the, what the application was attempting to do, like uh, grocery store downtown, people, we've known, we've needed one, and this was an opportunity for us to, to get one, figure it out to make the math work. Uh, housing and, and restaurants on Worthington Street was a decision that we just thought was really good for the city and really good for the downtown. Uh, and you know, so a compare and contrast on those are very difficult. Uh, so I think, I think the awards were made based upon the merits of the, of what they were uh, going to accomplish and what they applied for. Um, I know the numbers seem uh, staggering compared to others, and I do think over the course of the next couple of years, that it'll regulate itself, it'll fix itself uh, as we get more and more awards out and as we kind of dig into this. Um, Jesse was absolutely a hundred percent right. He asked us to be very deliberate in, in our thinking and our conversations about um, equity. And um, that's something that's been very, I've been very sensitive to. Uh, so I, I, I wasn't on the call two weeks ago, but I heard um, the talking points and I just want to point out that yes, the optics are not, don't look great on that front, but it's a little bigger than that in my mind where the decision for Big Y, the decision for um, Rafer's uh, application was something that was more of an economic development downtown decision.
Okay, and, and, and I understand it. I still don't think it's fair. I still don't think it's.
Yeah, I might, yeah, I get it.
Fair, um, downtown gets so much attention and funding and everything else now. If Big Y said, oh, we're gonna put this grocery store in the Mason Square area like was requested from them before, you know, maybe I would be a little bit more lenient um, with my um, intentions or my perceptions, but they didn't. And um, while we know downtown does need a grocery store, there's grocery stores needed through, you know, in other neighborhoods as well. So um, I still have a issue with that. But the other one that I would like for the team, if possible, to go back and look at is the Boys and Girls Club Family Center. And I think I mentioned that before because I'm not, still not clear why Karoo Street Boys and Girls Club would get one point two million and Family Center would get five hundred thousand and when our citizens council got somewhere between two point eight million or something altogether. When you look at both of their awards, because I think they got two awards. Um, so I don't know, that's something that can happen, that you can take up the Boys and Girls Club Family Center because the target population, they're, they're trying to combat this gun violence. And there's not a lot of organizations outside of Roca that is, and more, that has a real focus on this. And, you know, it, it's important to, I'm gonna say, the black and Latino community um, to make sure that we have these locations. And it's great that, you know, the um, the, the center can be built in the north end, but we need something for the teens and young adults in Mason Square also. So I don't know if that application can be revisited, but that would be something that I will request happen um, if, if possible.
I mean, I'll certainly, I, I, I mean, I could certainly have the conversation. I don't know if the process is anything that we can't go back and look at things. Uh, that uh, would be something I'll have to talk to the mayor about, but I have no problem raising the question and having a discussion.
Thank you. I think that would be um, greatly appreciated TJ. And then I think my final question is, um, I know that you guys were having a conversation with Dr. Cook about using interns. How'd that go?
That, um, I was not on that meeting. Lindsay and Mel were, said it went extremely well. Uh, I think we're shooting to get interns uh, the, starting in January. Uh, and I have a process by which they kind of give us some uh, of their stronger students that might be in the business. Uh, so that's really something that I were looking forward to. Uh, so, and I also um, having conversations with Counselor Allen about some Springfield College interns as well.
Nice, nice. What about the admins? Did you, did you guys?
So we just made an offer to, we posted for two part-time and we got three applicants total, only one qualified.
Three?
Yeah, total. And then uh, but she requested full-time, so we, we combined the two part-time into one full-time and she has since accepted the offer last night.
Okay.
So, and uh, and we also um, uh, Maravina Schubrick uh, is on loan to us from the elections department. Uh, and she has been doing a tremendous job as well.
Oh, good, okay. Um, those are the only questions I have. I think that you guys are working hard. Um, you know, is, is, is a lot of applications and you do have to do your due diligence. So I just wanted to say I appreciate the hard work that you're doing. I know that the criticism is coming, but we have to do our job too.
Yeah, no, and I, and I, and I appreciate the criticism. I, I, it doesn't, I mean, sometimes I get frustrated, but it's not at you guys, I'm frustrated at the process. Uh, but I mean, I think now we have it figured out to the sense where Echo Dev's helping and uh, Community Development's helping us out um, as a force multiplier because we just can't get the staff. But uh, I think you'll start seeing a lot more action being taken um, you know, towards helping folks figure it out and us figure out the, the yeses and the nos.
Okay. Do you have a turnaround time when you think the small businesses will be notified?
Uh, well, if the mayor makes decisions on the next round, there's gonna be a round of uh, approvals and denials going out. A lot of what our discussions have been, have been around linking their applications to COVID, which uh, many have a very weak link to COVID. Um, and so we're trying to be very deliberate about that. Some of them are just outrageous requests that we just can't fund um, only because of, you know, the size and what they're asking us to do, so. Um, but I would say we'd have a letters probably the next couple of weeks or so for um, up to forty, good or bad.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, um.
I just follow up on, on one relative.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that was, it was that uh, uh, two things. Uh, number one is, I was gonna say TJ, I, and Melanie, I, I think that you should forward uh, the recommendations that were made today this week.
Okay.
Hold them till the other ones because there was only a handful of ones. Um, and they look, and it seemed like there needed to be more discussion on. So I'd forward what we have now, because I think.
I, I have no problem with that either.
That's my position. But the other thing I was gonna say, uh, Madam Chair, that came up during the meeting that I, I pushed pretty hard on was um, were a few of them where the ask seemed very high. Uh, the discussion that we've had in this committee previously, which is, you know, the messaging early on from some folks uh, was put it all in.
Yeah.
So there were several app, there were several applications where, you know, I suggested, and others suggested, and there was agreement that Che should reach out. And as had previously been discussed, would, previously been discussed, would be the process, have a conversation to say, okay, you know, can we talk about um, what, what we could do within the confines of that application, even if we couldn't do, uh, the city couldn't do the full amount. And so um, I think that that, that process that should be taking place and I'll be pushing for it to take place a lot more. I, I can't speak for it to were made. Um, and then to the, to the final point on uh, re-reviewing some aspects, um, you know, I, relative to the Boys and Girls Club, I can't be involved in that aspect because I serve on their board. But in general, I think looking at especially the applications that were rejected just to make sure that we're all on the same page, um, is something that I, I mentioned earlier in this meeting. So I'm hopeful that the advisory committee is having, I, I'm encouraged by the dialogue that, that, that went on this morning. And I'm hopeful that a lot of the feedback that's coming through these legislative oversight meetings um, is influencing the process. So that, I just wanted to wrap up with that.
Oh, nice. Glad to hear it. Counselor Hurst, you had your hand raised and you put it down, but did you have something to say?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. All right. If there's no further questions or comments, um, I'm good with what we heard today. I'm glad you guys are getting more support. You definitely need it. Um, hope we can even ramp it up more in January with um, interns and just get these, get these checks out because they're driving me nuts too.
I would work on it. I would try it, so.
Yeah, you know, and I'm like, I, I don't know, I can't, you know, you say both, so. Hopefully, when you do ramp up, you'll have some type of communication tool to communicate with the um, public too. So um, we're, we're really hopeful for that.
My, my hope is, as, as we kind of get back into the ramping it up and, you know, moving on stuff, is controlling the messaging a little bit better and managing expectations a little bit better.
Yeah, that'd be great. All right, well, um, this meeting is adjourned and thank you all for your time.